You want the volume on?
It's not through the, can I just see the number at the bottom?
You're on.
Because you're, see, you're on. Can you bring up the bottom?
I can, I can't, I can't do that. I didn't get how to do it last week either.
Maybe it's not started? Let's see if we got it started. There's, um, Lori is not coming up with the picture icon.
Well, we won't, we have, we won't do it until.
I think it started.
Well. You started making.
I did, because I was trying to get her up and going. I didn't, you know, you could.
Yeah, it's on it.
We, we go ahead and start making people. I'll start making them.
Hey, no, that's a pretty yellow shirt you got there, man. I can't hear you. Look at Aurora, man. There you go. Don't tell me this Notre Dame.
Okay, folks.
All right.
Why, that's too awful.
Mm-hmm. Now is my volume on? And where am I?
I can hear you. You're on.
Am I the volume? Can anyone hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good luck.
Next one? Is Bill on?
Yes.
I can't see Bill. Can we?
Yeah, I'm here.
I, I just am looking. I don't see you, Bill, but I'll see you in a moment.
I'm showing up on my screen. I don't.
You're here, you're just not on my screen. I'm getting it set right now. Thank you. There we go. Okay. So it is 2:00 PM on September the 23rd, 2020. This is the special city council meeting, video and teleconference. And I will call the meeting to order. Bill, may we have an invocation?
Early. Please join me in a moment of prayer. God of all creation, we come before you and welcome your presence at this meeting. We give you respect and acknowledge you as our creator and provider. It is you who are omnipresent. You are everywhere, Lord. It is you who are omnipotent. You have all power. It is you who are omniscient. You know everything. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting today. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. And city administrator, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Cory Orenman?
Here.
Mayor Proton Nancy Britner?
Here.
Councilmember Corbin? Councilmember Lurin? Councilmember Colley?
Here.
Councilmember Sheel?
Here.
Councilmember Alvard?
Here.
And Councilmember Lurin?
Aurora, are you here?
Would she unmute herself?
Can you unmute yourself, Aurora, at the bottom?
Unmute yourself, Aurora.
Aurora, can you unmute yourself?
Aurora.
Okay. How about now? You're down.
Good, thank you.
It kept clicking back to on, it kept muting itself.
So roll call, the roll call, Aurora?
I'm here.
Got it.
Thank you. So we will go to public comments. And I have a request from Raydon Tilly to speak today. Raydon, are you on the line? Do we show Raydon on the line?
Raydon, you're unmuted. Can you unmute yourself?
He is unmuted.
His hand's raised.
Raydon Tilly, you have the floor.
Hello?
I can hear him barely.
Raydon, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I'm on the line.
Okay.
Okay.
We can hear her.
We cannot hear you clearly or with any volume. We do hear that you're on the line. Can you increase?
Okay, I have my volume, I have my volume turned up completely.
That sounds good. What I'd like to know is if you would like to speak now? Or would you like to speak on a particular agenda item or in the public hearing? What would you like to do?
My comments are primarily toward the public hearing. Um, I'm happy to deliver them now if that's appropriate.
I really would prefer that you do the comments when we call the public hearing, which is the next item. So if that's convenient for you, we will call you back or just stay on there. We'll, we're going to call that item up now.
I won't change a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so on the regular agenda, item one, we will go into the public hearing on the proposed tax rate for 2020 tax year. It's 2:05 PM and we will commence the public hearing. Raydon Tilly has indicated an interest in speaking as a public comment at this time. You have the floor.
Thank you. Perhaps no statewide power outage this time? No promises. I do hold out promise, however, that this council will join and outdo our county commissioners' court in reducing the tax rate. The proposed 22.31 cent rate looks lower than 22.35 this year, not when average home state taxable value has risen. No, as your increase page shows, that rate represents 4.23% higher taxes on our homes. All of us work to protect ourselves from COVID-19, but only those over 65 are protected from this tax increase. For the rest of us, the majority of Wood Creek, you are taxing more on top of a pandemic that threatens our livelihoods. I guess that if you are retired and have a steady stream of income, your COVID-19 struggle may not be financial. If this were an evening meeting, you might hear from other workers how this one small gesture matters. Please show your care, council. By reducing the tax rate to the no new revenue rate of 21.52 cents, a piggy bank stuffed with $1.5 million already is war chest enough. What do you fear? If Hayes County can cut nearly a full cent from the voter approval rate, I suggest Wood Creek can count, can cut two. Your budget already eliminates or lowers parks and recreation, green space, landscape maintenance, water quality testing, which I find painful and unnecessary. On the bright side, you have dropped the Cypress Point Delilah Road project, which I find prudent and appropriate to the reasonable objections that came with public disclosures. The city will still receive every dollar next year that it did this year. It's just a one-time tax freeze. Your two cents not to add to the burden of these trying times. I also have comments to the budget amendment that I will hold base until that time, if that's appropriate.
That, that's just fine. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anyone who would like to speak? City administrator, do we have any one in queue or any hands up?
No.
On the public hearing?
Did you tell that to the? Did you tell that to? Oh, did you do a hand up? Did you tell that to hands if they need to raise it?
We will give a, we will give a direction on the procedure for a hands up, giving any citizens who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. So.
Okay. If you are on your phone, you'll need to hit star two to put your hand up. If you're on a computer, you will need to go down to the icon and hit the hands up icon. Turn it on.
So we will give you that opportunity to speak. If there's anyone who would like to speak in the public hearing. Are there any? Any in queue to speak?
No.
There being no other public comments at this time, we will close the public hearing. And it is 2:10 PM, September 23rd, 2020. We will go to item two on the regular agenda. Consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, amending the 2019-2020 amended fiscal year budget, providing for a severability clause and providing for an effective date. And I'll need a motion?
Right up.
Or do you?
Right up wants to.
Is this the one? I thought he wanted to speak on the budget item. Raydon, did you want to speak on item two?
Yes, ma'am, the budget amendment.
That's the budget amendment?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah.
So you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, your budget amendment includes line items that deserve explanation. Um, you know, going back to the request I had two weeks ago. Um, two items are labeled TDM, DR, 4485, and they're way off. So, um, revenues 18,560 versus 37,500 budgeted or 49% under. The expense is 184,720 versus 50,000 budgeted, and that's fully 269% over. Um, expense item, law enforcement, is 86,650 versus 63,660 budgeted, and that's 36% overage. And I have one new expense item this week to add, um, projects at 26,500 versus 21,500 budgeted. And that's a 23% overshoot. Um, I've looked for explanation on this. There's no check register past May online, and we have, we received no detail otherwise. So I'm just asking that before passage of the amendment package, council right now has a perfect opportunity to make these items clear. Um, so that's it. But I do want to add in closing that, um, what I consider a merciful end to the budget process, that I thank you all for your service to the community. And I commend the members of council and some who may soon be, who participated in LWV's forum last night. Your ideas for Wood Creek give meaning to all of us. Great hope, and I applaud your courage and your commitment to your fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other items that I need to call back that you would like to speak on? Raydon?
No, ma'am, I will, I will listen now with great interest.
Alrighty, thank you. So I need a motion.
I move that we approve this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So the motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pullman?
Yes, uh, first of all, can we answer Raydon's questions about those line items? And I also have questions with regard to the budget amendment on page five. Uh, again, we're, uh, it looks like legal went from 25,000 to 46,000. It's a $21,000 increase. Um, also, law enforcement went from 63,000 to 86,000. Um, what happened? So.
That's. I believe that in two previous budget meetings, those issues were asked and answered. Then I would be happy to, Nancy?
I was going to answer the question on the law enforcement. Part of that was from last year.
That's correct, from what I understand.
That's why that amount will go back the same for this year.
And what was it?
It was their payment for their last quarter that we got late.
Let me answer that.
Nancy, Mayor, Mayor Proton, the city manager will also add to that.
Yes, as Mayor Proton Britner stated that Hayes County did not bill for a portion of the last fiscal year's law enforcement. If you refer back to the budget documents that were presented during the workshops, I believe the amount that was shown that was expensed for that time period is around $36,000. This was a catch-up amount where they did not bill us in the same fiscal year.
Okay, so we were catching up on past due billing.
That's right.
Okay. What about the, um, the legal that went from 25 to 46,000?
Uh, that, that was from, um, billings from both Kishan Ortiz and the current city attorney. We did find one bill that had not been, um, submitted by Kishan Ortiz from when they were still our city attorneys. And if you look at the next line item down, that since the council has asked us to break out the expenses as we do, I gotta scroll down here. That we did also reduce, uh, the special legal counsel. So overall, that we had an increase in general legal counsel of 21,000, but we had a decrease of legal special cases of 18,000. For a net difference of about $3,000.
Got it.
Is there any other?
There was another question Raydon had, and I didn't catch it about, um, I can't find it here. Uh, it was some sort of reimbursement from the state?
Page, page two, TDM, DR, 4485.
Okay. Can you help me with that?
On TDM, the revenues of TDM, DR, 4485, uh, that is funding through the state, emergency management, and also FEMA. Uh, we were, this will be reimbursed in next fiscal year. Uh, but those, that was the first, uh, check that we received of 18,560. Uh, we were hoping to have more receipts before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the TDM 4485, that is, uh, at, originally the budget amendment showed $50,000 from the last one. The new one is 184,720. That is also tied to the grants for emergency management through the state and also FEMA. And that will be offset by the revenues that will be received next year.
So you're thinking that'll reconcile next year then?
Right. The thing is, as you know, any grant that you're receiving from the federal government, this is for the COVID, uh, activities that we had where we provided the, uh, respite, uh, location and meals for our first responders. But we are working with FEMA and also the state to have received reimbursement on those costs. And the revenue should offset the expenses.
Okay. I have a question on this item, Brenton.
Yes.
On the TDM, DR, 4485, are we being reimbursed at what percentage? What, are there any percentage of city dollars? Um, or are they?
We are, there's reimbursement of 75%, but we can use our volunteer hours and other expenses to help offset our 25%.
So 25%? So we're being reimbursed at 75%?
Uh, after, after we do all the calculations, it might be greater than that.
Okay. And are you directly receiving, are you receiving the funding through the governors? I mean, through the emergency management program in Texas? Or are you directly filing with FEMA?
Uh, it's actually the first, uh, 92,000 will be coming through the state and the remaining amount will be coming through FEMA.
Okay.
If there's new programs that we're working on.
And as far as?
Excuse me?
Have there been any exceptions? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not done.
Okay.
Have there been any exceptions to our, uh, from FEMA? I know, any denials from FEMA in request of reimbursement?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to ask council member Alvord if she wanted to reiterate or comment on that as well, since she actually was in part of the program and has done a great bit of the paperwork and knows the details of the money.
Yes, I'm familiar with the FEMA process. I manage it for the state of Texas.
Oh, yes, we know.
So just.
She's been doing, she's been.
I just wanted to know the match that you're receiving and how your, how your reimbursement is coming through. And I also know from having to advance state funds that sometimes they did not reimburse timely or they did not reimburse the full amount. I'm just trying to determine what liability, if any, if any city may incur. Thank you.
So Becky?
As far as we know, um, that it will be reimbursed and everything that we have submitted. But if you've worked with FEMA, you know that that is not always the case. Uh, we absolutely promise that every penny will be reimbursed.
I know.
We have, it has been indicated that it will be. So, um, Maureen is doing a great job of helping.
Yeah.
Stay on top of that as well. Um, and it's, uh, waiting for the checks at this point.
And I think if you would come, at least comment on the high level of the volunteer services toward the 25%.
Uh, we did have a number of volunteers daily, uh, who worked at the facility. We had about $18,000 worth of time put in by volunteers. Um, and that was, that was like the 25%. We did have some expenses, some office had the expenses. Uh, they were also offset the 25%.
I had a question, um, a follow-up on the volunteer hours. And the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, um, we were, we, all of us are volunteers. And there were, I reported some hours that I had been involved in communicating, you know, my job of, as a council member. Uh, but I haven't, we haven't done it anymore. Have we considered? Are we considering that? Are we just using the volunteers who are working with the program, particularly the facility at Camp Young Judea?
Um, I believe I was told that as council members, we were not considered volunteers.
Okay.
Yes.
We were more like city employees, even though we don't get a paycheck.
Okay. You know, I'm always trying to maximize the. You know, I'm always trying to maximize the match.
We are being able to use our staff time. Our two staff members are hourly employees for hours that worked past what they would have regularly during the COVID disaster.
One can try. Thank you very much, Vicki.
Yeah.
Not just for this, but for everything you've done.
I wish we could have put all those numbers in or the council member and time out at the camp. Yes. Councilmember Pullay.
Yes, yes ma'am, just a question, the 184,720, I mean, can you give me a breakdown of what, what that was spent on? I know we did meals up there, there were some lodging. You know, help me Vicki, understand what, what, what that expenditure went toward.
Sure. I don't have the digits here in front of me. I can tell you that we did pay a rental fee for the facility. We paid for meals, we served two meals a day for almost three months. Or months.
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Yeah, about three and a half months. We did vary the number of meals that we serve according to our audience and participation by responders and medical personnel. And that was the majority of the meals and the rental of the facility.
You know, I want to thank you for doing that at work. I want to thank you for doing that work. I just want to make sure, I mean, there's a breakdown somewhere in our, in our files where you see this, so, okay. Well, thank you again Vicki for doing that. And I think it was a credit to the community. And again, I thank you, I just want to make sure that, you know, everything's kosher. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I think it was a wonderful thing for the community to do. I think it feeds a lot of goodwill and a lot of credit for doing it. And I think it helped contribute to our one COVID case.
Is there any other discussion? So, we saw the question on.
I'm sorry, I have, I have a question, but this is mostly for Brenton. I'm, I'm looking at the revenues when we have the different franchises from different sources. And I know that our franchise with the water disposal, they, it, it fluctuates depending on services rented. With the golf course, it's constant for the 500. I said, can you tell me a little bit, is there any, is that a fixed franchise? Is there any adjustment? I know that, the reason I'm asking is because their business has been increasing consistently. And so that's my question.
The franchise fee is just for them to be able to cross our roadways. We have seen, if you look at the state sales tax, that there has been a large increase over the year. That, I believe, let me scroll back a little. If you look at state sales tax, that at the last minute, we were 65,000. We have received a total of 77,000 this year. In, in just the last month, we had received over $9,000 in sales tax revenues. So, that can be directly attributed to, number one is the golf course, and their usage, also our liquor store. And then also where our citizens are making sure that they show that they live in Wood Creek instead of Wimberly.
Okay, thank you Brenton.
So, are there any other comments or discussion at this time? There being none, we will call the question and the administrator will do a voice vote. Okay, so Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes. And by the way, it is LeBrun. Thank you.
Councilmember Pullay?
Yes.
Councilmember Scheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
So that's a 5-0 vote. And the motion, motion carries. So we will go to agenda item three. Consideration and take appropriate action on an ordinance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, adopting the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021. In accordance with the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 102, providing for the filing of the budget, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Britner?
I so move.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Alvord, motion being made and seconded. Will open for discussion. Councilmember Pullay, you're recognized. Have you muted yourself?
I did, I'm sorry, here we go.
You're unmuted, start over.
Yes, I will, thank you mayor. I'm looking at, first of all, on page 10, law enforcement, we have 63,660. Again, how does that play into the offset that we brought in from, from last year? Is it still going to be 63,000? Or is there the offset that we're going to gain from last year or not? I don't understand that. Brenton, can you help me?
I'm trying to understand the question, councilmember. The expense for this upcoming fiscal year will be 63,660 unless there's a change requested by the commissioner's court. The 86,000 that we expensed from fiscal year would have no effect on that.
Okay, I got it. So I'm, yeah, counting it each at a time. So, let me ask you, do we have any kind of accountability mechanisms built into this to, to see what we're getting for the 63,000? Or do we just write them a check every month? Or how does that work? What is the accountability standards?
Under the agreement that we have with Hayes County Commissioner's Court for the constable services, that the manager and also the constable are directed to manage the actual agreement. We are in constant contact with the constable's office as to the shift work they are working, who is on duty, and ensuring that they are providing us with the 40 hours that we have contracted with them per week.
Well, that leads me to two questions. Number one, how, how do they account to you for that? And then how do you account to the council for that and to the taxpayers? You agree? Having a hard time hearing you Brenton.
Okay.
There's a lot of static.
I think some of that is only due to the negotiation with the actual constables and the time that we actually negotiate the contracts, Mr. Pullay. And you would be totally involved in that. But I don't know that we could actually tell you in a budget meeting.
Well, you're asking me to vote for this 63,660 expenditure. I'm just asking, how do we know we're getting anything for this money? You know, what is the accountability standards? How does it work? I'd like to know that before I vote to reauthorize this, man. And I think it's basic due diligence with taxpayer money. You know, what are they doing? How do they account to us for their activities? And that simple question, I think is a fair question.
Councilmember Britner?
I yield to Ms. LeBrun.
Okay. Mayor for them. Brent, as one, and Mayor Proton Britner was also involved. We were involved in bringing the formalizing and bringing the constable hours to the city. The contract is for 40 hours of work. And the categories of work are detailed. We get a simple monthly report that is presented to council once a month that shows what activities they have conducted. The deputies that are assigned to us are required to maintain timesheets. And if I, and then when our, when our, to, to support those expenses. And don't forget that we are audited once a year. And all of these details are reviewed in the audit to ensure that we are not paying for services we have not received. I, I think Mayor Proton Britner and I have been pretty tough on, on this item, including when we want to see the patrols and how we want to see, how many we want to see. And I am confident that the records are being maintained to support this category. And Mayor for them Britner?
I agree. Yeah, you said the exact same thing that I was going to say, so I totally agree.
Okay, thanks.
My question is, where are all these records? I mean, if I bill a client $66,000 a year, I have to count for my time very, almost minutely, because they're not going to just write me a check. The records I've seen on this contract are, I think, vague. I have no idea what they're doing. And I'd like to know.
We appreciate your statement in the discussion, and we'll move on.
I, I don't want to move on, I'd like it resolved ma'am. I think I have a right to ask these questions and I like this, to have an answer to these questions.
This is not the agenda item to answer questions that you're posing. We are taking your statement. And I am.
I'm asking questions. Can you help me? Somebody, answer my questions.
We are not here to answer questions that you posed today on the specifics of the contract. We are here to talk about the budget item, and your statement has been received. Thank you.
And you just want me to write a check? Is that what you want me to do?
Any other discussion from the council?
I'm trying to cutting off discussion.
You are not in order now. You're not in order, you're not recognized, Councilmember Pullay.
That's illegal ma'am.
When we move on please, are there any other discussion items? On that, any other discussion on this matter?
Question?
Yes.
I call a question.
Yes. We call the question. The administrator please, roll and by roll vote. Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pullay?
No.
Councilmember Scheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
And that is four, I, one no. Thank you. Motion carries, and we'll move on to item four. Consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, approving the certified appraisal role, setting the tax rate, levying and assessing ad valorem taxes for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Wood Creek, Texas for fiscal year 2020, 21. Apportioning the levies for specific purposes, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. May I have a motion?
I move the approval of this ordinance.
Second.
So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Pullay, is that a wave?
I think so.
Have the floor.
Yes ma'am. Is this going to result in a tax increase, this rate?
It has been stated on the document about the public hearing that the actual levy has gone down. The estimated rate is a 4.23% on the average homestead value of a home in town, or approximately $25 per year.
Increase.
Based on because the valuations went up.
Do we have the option to do a no, basically no increased tax rate? And I think that would be 4.2152.
The council has the option to vote on a tax rate just so it does not exceed the rate that was proposed. Your budget document that you just adopted does have the estimated tax calculated at 0.2231 per $100 valuation.
But, but I'm seeing a no, new revenue tax rate for 2020, and that's at 0.2152, right?
Correct.
And that's, that's an option that we have, not to raise taxes.
That's what the council voted to do, is it, am I correct?
Well, this is where they have to adopt the tax rate.
Right.
So we have the option not to raise taxes.
You have an option to do anything you want to except to exceed the 0.2235.
So, are there any other discussions at this time? Any other discussion? There being none, we will call the question. Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pullay?
No new taxes, no.
Councilmember Scheel? Councilmember Scheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
And we have four ayes, one nay. Motion carries. We will go to item number five on the agenda. Consider and take appropriate action on a resolution ratifying the recently adopted budget that contains a property tax rate that raises more total property taxes than the previous year. And I have a motion.
I so move, let's go, come on.
Really? And a second, thank you, I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Scheel and Councilmember Alvord second it. Is there any discussion?
Let, let me speak to it, since this seems to be controversial again. Brent, you know, there's a difference between the tax rate and the dollars raised. And so we, yes, we are increasing the number of dollars by a very small amount. We have not changed the tax rate. I think you can be comfortable in saying we didn't levy any new taxes. We didn't raise the rate from previous years. For what, three years Brent? Brenton?
Yes.
Three years we have not raised that rate. The value of my property and your property in the eyes of the county tax assessor has gone up. And therefore, we get to pay a little more. So, you can say to your neighbors that you're, you're a hero, you haven't raised the taxes.
If, if I may.
Thank you. Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes, if I may, thank you mayor. I would like to second what Councilmember Scheel has said. I have talked to members of the community. In fact, our tax rate is slightly lower than it was last year.
Yes.
We are suffering from what is a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing that our property values are increasing because our homes, our land are our greatest asset. And it does require that we pay slightly more. But it is not the choice of the city, we're not raising taxes. More, we're keeping the tax, like Councilmember Scheel said now and when he was mayor, in three years, we have not increased taxes. And I think we're being very careful and conservative to protect our citizens. And I think we're being very careful and conservative to protect our citizens. But there's little that we can do with the assessments that are bringing the mon, the dollars that we're paying to be higher because our properties are increasing in value. We are a desirable area, Hayes County and Wood Creek. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Sheel and Councilmember LeBrun, on those comments. We are moving on to item six.
Have we voted yet?
No. I thought we just.
Let me just vote no, Gloria.
I thought we just did, and then they came back and wanted to talk about it. Call the question. Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pully?
Let me think about it. No.
Councilmember Sheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Four, one, zero. What? All right.
No, well, Brent, no, no, he said he was thinking about it. He has not voted, you need to go back to him.
I did vote, I said no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said.
Can I give a speech now about freedom and liberty and that sort of thing, or will we pass that? Did you bring your stool to stand up?
We're all constitutional scholars in this room. Okay, shall we?
I voted no twice, I wanted the record to reflect that.
There's something about people who have to have the last word. And I'm going to take it now. Item six. Consider and take appropriate action on an ordinance providing for a change in the municipal contributions for the current service annuity reserve at retirement of the employees of the city of Creek, Texas. And may I have a motion? Is anyone? Go ahead.
I can't hear.
At all now, or?
In and out, very scratchy.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
I'm recognizing you, you have the floor.
Me?
Didn't you have your hand up?
No, Ms. LeBrun did.
I did, I said I so move.
I'll second that.
Uh, Ms. Alvor seconded.
Okay.
LeBrun's motion. Is there any discussion? All right, there being none, we will call the question, call the roll for the roll call vote. Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pully?
Yes.
Yay!
Oh, my dear.
I want a cookie.
Give him a cookie.
Councilmember.
Brenton has some cookies.
Councilmember Sheel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
Okay. Can I fall off the chairs? An unanimous vote? Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take appropriate action on a resolution of the city council of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, confirming a review of the investment policy and strategies of the city and confirming changes made.
Would you have a correction on the ordinance that was pointed out to me before the meeting? That talks about that a special meeting held on September 9th that would be needed to be changed to September 23rd?
I think that had to do with the big blackout day. Yeah. And Councilmember Alvor. So, do I have a motion? On the resolution? Count, Mayor Proton Britner?
I move to accept.
Councilmember Alvor, second. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, we'll, uh, move the question. Mayor Proton Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrun?
Yes.
Councilmember Pully?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Victory. Okay, motion carries. And I just would just like to thank all of you for this very long, very detailed. I believe it's, there've been six budget meetings, two hearings on the budget, two workshops. And it's, there's been a lot of thought, a lot of work done on this budget. I just want to thank all of you and staff and for all the input. It's all so invaluable and benefits our community. And I do want also, just one more time before we adjourn, to ask if we do have any members of the community who wanted to make any public comment on the budget or on these items or other business of the city at this time. We want to be certain to entertain any comments. So do we have anyone who has a hand up? I think we do.
Not really, we have somebody.
He should, he should be able to speak now.
Okay, who, what number?
619 and 8391.
An 8931. You have four if you would like to make comments. And please state your name and your address in Wood Creek, please.
Oh, this is Bob Hamburg, I live in 97 Brook Hollow. Um, part of the reason why I wanted to call in is I, I do like having the last word as well, but that's not the real reason. The actual real reason is, um, I've looked closely at the budget as well, and there are so many items. And it looks like there is an awful lot of work that goes into this that, that we have no idea unless we're actually going to those workshops. We're not allowed to actually do the workshop, but to, to review every line item is painstaking. And, um, I just want to thank each and every one of you for all the hard work that you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who might want to make a public comment? Is there any other business before the council this time? There being none, we are adjourned. Thank you.